On behalf of the citizens of Paducah, McCracken County, we thank you for all of the department heads and all of those people who follow and who practice followership every day, whether or not they are on the payroll, they're volunteers, male, female, and even children. We are grateful for them. Now Father God, we turn this commission meeting over to you. Have your way. I believe, Father God, that everything will be done decently and in order. And for all of the families who are broken and hurting, even to this day because of nine eleven, we lift them up as well. Thank you, God. God bless you, God bless us all, God bless Paducah, McCracken County, and the people of God say together, amen.
Amen. The commission's gonna leave the podium? Present. Oh! Order. Oh! Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated. Thank you all to the police department, the fire department for that great ceremony. Today's been a special day, and the whole country has been celebrating it. And it was nice of us to do our part to remember our fallen comrades. So, thank you all very much. Moving on ahead with additions or deletions, Mitch City Manager, any additions or deletions?
None.
Thank you. We have two reports tonight. We'll start out with the Lower Town Arts and Music Festival report. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here, commissioners. We're very happy to give you our report for the 2012 Lower Town Arts and Music Festival. Once again, we had a really successful festival, and I know that most of you were there, if not all of you were there, and we really appreciate your support. For this year, we had about 25 sponsors, and that was three more than we've had in the past. The new sponsors were Southgate Chili, which is actually out of Nashville, Tennessee. They are still continuing to do an ad campaign for us, and we have a little blurb about the Lower Town Arts and Music Festival on their cans of chili that go all across the country. So, that's a big plus for us, I think, to give us a little more exposure nationally. Also, Wagner's was a new sponsor for us, and Payment Plus. Even though we had the 25 sponsors, with the continued economic environment that we have today, it's been continually difficult to find the number of sponsors that we've had. So, we really do appreciate the city's support.
Attendance this year was up again. We were up about 10%. The first year, well, to gauge attendance, we actually have an inbound survey that everyone gets, we have greeters at each of the six ways to walk into the festival. And you're asked two questions. How did you hear about the festival? And people check that off. And then what your zip code is. So, we know where people come from to visit our festival, and we know how they heard about it. But we also count them, little clickers. The first year, we had just under 13,500 people come to Paducah for this festival. The next year, we had about 1,000 more. And this year, we're just under 16,000 people who came to join us for the Lower Town Arts and Music Festival. So, it's kind of a neat thing. The word is getting out there.
Other points of note, we had the greatest number of applicants this year of any year since we've had the festival of artists. There are about 70 artists from around the district that we pull from, which is a 350-mile area around Paducah. So, we had about 70 applicants, which was great. And one of the new questions we asked on the application was, how did you hear about the festival? Approximately 30% of those applicants said they heard about the festival from other artists. And that's exactly what we would love to see more of, because you build a festival's reputation by how the artists who participate feel about the festival. 30% of those people saying that they heard positive reviews about our festival from other artists is really a great thing. So, we hope that we can continue that kind of activity. Out of those 70 applicants, we had about 50 artists on the street, which again is the biggest number of artists that we've had so far. So, we're really, really very happy about that.
This year, as we always try and do, we added some new things to the festival, and we actually got some really new, neat community involvement. One of the things that I think was the biggest success, and I had the most fun with, was our own Paducah Improv group. We set up a laugh tent, and we had the guys out there on the streets doing small street theaters and moments. We had them in the balconies doing balcony theater, which was fabulous. And then at the close of each night of the show, we lit up the laugh tent, and the last thing that the show ended with was peels of laughter rolling down Seventh Street toward the Texaco Station and toward Illinois. Much bigger involvement, a 40-foot-long kids' activity tent with its own separate stage. We had bigger involvement with the GPS folks who did a fabulous job at the festival, not only with their presentation and their booth, but with their program for recycling. More different vendors for food. It was a pretty, oh, and we had culinary theater from the school. Western Kentucky Technical College brought their culinary students down and did a great presentation all three days.
We continue to have Taste of Paducah, and that's the third year that we've done that. I think the public really appreciates that. We had about nine to 12 food vendors this year. We recognize that for the restaurants who participate, it's a little bit of a challenge for them, because they have to have staff at the restaurant and staff at their booth. But we really do appreciate them. They had record sales again this year. So, I know that it's a good thing for the restaurants as well, and we're very happy to have them participate.
So, two things in closing, three things. One, we'd like to give you this official award of thanks for your contribution, your ongoing support, and your great energy for the festival. And secondly, I'm hoping that somehow magically, the festival becomes a small-budget item on a continuing basis with the city. That would be terrific. And last, but certainly not least, Stephanie has decided that she is not going to be my co-director for the festival in years going forward, and I'd like to introduce my new co-director at this time. Victoria, will you please come up?
First, let me say that it has nothing to do with Michael, my decision. I don't need his partner anymore. One of our sponsors is Lord's Hospital, and I happen to be an employee of Lord's Hospital, which I started about a year ago. And with, what, with working and trying to do other things in my life, this has just proved a little bit too much for me to combine with that. So, I'm happy that I have been a part of this. It's been wonderful to share this directorship with Michael, and I know that I leave him in good hands with Victoria, because she's absolutely wonderful. Thank you all.
Do you, do you know this new partner very well?
We've gone through an extensive interview process, and I think it's gonna work out.
You can trust her, and you can count on her.
Well, considering how much time the festival pulls from my day, Victoria figured that she wanted to see me at all in those two months, that she'd better step up as the festival co-director.
I figure if you can't beat 'em, you might as well join 'em.
Let me just say that this has been, what, the third year that you all have stepped in to help Paducah and to help with the art festival. I think it has been a great festival. I think it has done exactly what we wanted it to do, and that is to bring people into our community, bring them to Lower Town, enjoy our community. Who is better qualified to do that than to put on an art festival than some artist? And so, obviously, next year, I'll no longer be with the city as mayor, and I hope that the commission will continue to support Michael and his team. I think what should happen, Lisa, is I think Lisa and your team should work together with them. It should be a joint activity. I do know the financing has been, has been difficult. The city put up some money, PRA put up some money. I made some calls. Other people made some calls. You all made calls. And so, it takes money in order to put something like this on. So, we have to keep that financing part of it going and going strong. But I would urge Mayor Kaler to, to start early in making sure this has a good base and will be another successful festival next year. So, with that, I will call on anybody who has any comments to make. Mayor Kaler, I'll start with you.
Well, I mean, it just continues to grow and continues to be more successful, and it's because Michael, you, and Stephanie, and now Victoria are passionate about what you do, and that's the key, being passionate.
Commissioner Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Michael, and Victoria, and Susan. Appreciate all your really, it's a lot of hard work, and it's a sacrifice, and we really appreciate you doing it, and I hope the rewards for y'all are as great as they are for the city of Paducah. But I know you love this community, so it has to be, or you wouldn't be doing it. But to think about growing that festival into 16,000 people is just phenomenal. That's an incredible feat, a magical feat. And so, to have festivals like that in Paducah, Kentucky, to see this community move as far forward and progress as much as it has since I've been around, which is a long time, is really, really incredible and exciting, and it makes Paducah a wonderful place a little. People look forward all year long to go into the Lower Town Arts and Music Festival. I know I do, and it's really an exciting event. And thank you all from the depths of our heart for doing all the hard work that you do.
Commissioner Gault, you probably understand their job better than anybody with your association with Barbecue on the River. So, have you got anything you'd like to add?
Well, it is their dedication, and so many other volunteers I know. You depend on an army of volunteers, I know, and it is your dedication that makes all the difference in that. We cannot thank you enough for everything that you do for the community. And every time I go, there's always something new that has been added and a new twist, and that keeps it exciting, and we thank you so much for everything you do.
Commissioner Abraham?
Thank you so much, man. I mean, the number speaks for itself, and if you're gonna volunteer for something, it's great to volunteer for something that you're passionate about. That helps. It really does, and it shows in the number. So, appreciate you all.
All right. Well, thank you all very much again, and it won't be long till you'll be starting on next year's.
Already.
Stephanie, we're gonna miss you.
Thank you very much.
All right, all right.
We won't let her go too far.
Okay, Victoria. Thank you all. Now, to a less exciting topic. Swimming pool renovation.
Depends on how you look at it.
Depends on your perspective, right?
I'm talking about the renovation, not necessarily the swimming pool.
Without one, we will not have the other.
Correct, correct.
Just the screen?
Oh, the screen, yes. That would require a switch.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to come tonight. Let you know our status on the Noble Park Pool renovation. I have with me Chad McCann from Florence and Hutchison tonight. And just to kind of go through what we've done to date, we have been working since probably last February or so, since, on the plans and designs. And we went out to bid and opened bids on July 27th, and we're just gonna go through, this is the outline of our tonight's agenda. And we opened bids on the 27th. After reviewing those bids, they came in rather high. And we are sending the city manager a form letter that, recommending that we reject the bids. He does that under his authority as city manager. And what you have were the city budget, which is overall budget, which also includes the concession stand work, F&amp;H's projected budget on this bid, and you see how they came in quite a bit higher. The three areas that really impacted the budget more was, and we thought we had come in with rather high prices on the, each of these areas, the gutter system, the building which housed the filtration system, and site concrete. But they were considerably higher, and thus brought in those numbers a great deal higher. Since then, we've gone back to redesign, rework. We've also gotten unexpected assistance. The state, Jan Brown, who with the state health department, has come down to visit with us to help us work through our issues, see what we can do to improve our system while at the same time saving some money. We've, in the past, we've looked and talked to the state, and sometimes we've run into difficult issues. But she actually came down, visited the site, and gave us some ideas on cost savings. So, we've incorporated some of that into our design. With our design, we are still going to have the new liner, the new gutter system, the new piping systems, filters, the recirculation pumps, disinfection system, the new slide, demo the waiting pool, and we're going to install the small new spray pad. What we will do, because we're switching over the filtration system to go back to the existing filtration system, we're going with the diatomaceous earth, the DE system, rather than a sand filter. The sand filter, you needed a larger building. It was easier to operate, was the biggest thing. It reduced staff time and that sort of thing. But we've taken a step back, used the existing staff time we have, and probably a little better. But with that, using the diatomaceous earth, which my staff's already used to, and we're going to back into using that. We're going to eliminate, which will reduce the need for sewer improvements, additional pump and piping, and the water slide, as far as the pump and piping, we're going with a different type of slide that doesn't need all of that. We can actually use a direct water connection to that, and it'll, the water will end up in the pool, and we'll use that as refill water into the pool. And it's, so it's using, serving two purposes, one for the, to put the water on the slide, and then it refills the pool. We're going to be able to use the existing canopies that we have. We've actually got a set of, we've got one that was a former one that we've got, that we'll put back into the site. So, we'll double the number of canopies we have. And we're going to do some in-house demolition on the, some of the work on the diving boards, the stands for those, the lifeguard stands, and we're gonna do, and the existing, the old little buildings that are in-house. So, we're going to do some of that in-house with my staff. And that, we project, will bring the base bid down to eighty-nine, $890,000. Now, we could, and this is not a recommendation, if we got into a last-gasp effort, we could use the existing gutter system. But that is using 1992 technologies when we're looking at 2012. They're already 20 years old. We also, in determining the primary leaks of the pool, that is still a possibility that that was one of three areas that leaked. The only one we have been able to eliminate is the lower main drain area. It is holding water. But we could possibly be losing water in the gutters. We knew we were before, some years ago, when Joel Scarborough was here, and we were working on the pool, we knew that we were losing some water at that point. But between that and the light areas, where the light fixtures are in the pool, those are the areas of prime concern there. So, we really want to put in this new existing gutter, or replace the existing gutter system. It's just a better idea when we come to it. So, the base bid that we project on this round will be at $890,000. Hopefully, we will be able to take care of that. We've got a timetable. Well, you can see, we're still planning on doing the main portions of the pool. Everything is still, we're just reducing the size of the building, that footprint, and utilizing the DE system. And the state was really uncertain until Ms. Brown came down to look at the DE filter system and how much capacity we actually had for turning water over. And that's one thing that we really had a great deal of capacity, and will end up saving us considerable amount of money. That's, you see where your lanes are gonna be, your swim lanes for, when the swim team is out there, the footprint of the water slide, and the rest of the pool. The redesign's going on. We're going to submit to the state. We're not going to bid again until we've got that approval back. We want to make sure that we've got that. But we anticipate that that approval will be back to us by mid-October. We'll rebid at that time, open bids towards the end, put a two-week bid limit on this, and award sometime in November. We anticipate that our projected completion will still be by May 1st. That's one good thing about starting so early. We were, that we'll allow the contractor to choose when they want to start. We're just going to give them a deadline of May 1st, 2013, to get it done, so we can have the pool ready and open by Memorial Day of 2013.
Okay, Mitch City Manager, you got?
I have Chad McCann here, if you have any detailed questions or anything that you want to have.
Well, I, you know, it's obviously what we like to do in terms of a restart, but I can assure the commission that since the opening and examination of bids, that a lot of time and thought has been put to this. And I agree with Mark that with the open-ended start date and a specific deadline, it's probably gonna create a more favorable bid climate. And I think also, we're starting at a point in time when the trestle boards are not as likely to be full as what they would have been before. So, all indications are and expectations are that we'll hit a more favorable bid climate. And I want to stress what I think is the importance of that gutter system being replaced. We're not gonna float a bond issue and do a major renovation of that pool very often. So, with a 20-year-old system there, it doesn't make sense to prolong the life of that, or even expect that it could be prolonged another 15 years before we would do a project of this scale again. So, again, it makes sense to do that now, and even with that in there, we're looking at being somewhere in the ballpark of what the engineer's estimate was before.
We don't want to gamble on anything that's, you know, that we only do every 20 years.
Any questions for anybody?
Is the concession stand also in here?
This is not in this section of it. We're actually, they're handling that. That will be a separate contract on that portion of it.
Tell me about the building, Mark. It says here modular building option.
There, that is a modular. Modular buildings are like the ones that we put in the restrooms in Noble Park. That will, when we put that in as an alternate, it'll give the contractor two choices. He can stick build it and do it with a, just local contractors building it here locally, or go to one of these prefab buildings. It is a concrete building, and they've served us pretty well as far as the restrooms that we put, installed in Noble Park. So, it's just an option for that contractor to look and hopefully save us some money.
Anybody else? All right, men, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Good luck. Okay, we're now going to a public hearing on property tax levy. And Mr. Perkins, would you come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. The purpose of this public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed 25 cents per $100 assessed value, real estate levy. A hearing is required by Kentucky law and statute when the proposed rate exceeds the comp rate, or the compensation rate. This year's compensation rate is 24.1 cents. And later in this meeting, the proposed property tax levy ordinance will be introduced. That's pretty much all I have, so it's really up for public comment now.
All right. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to comment on, on the levy? There are no comments? There are no comments?
I think, John, could you share with the public what the trend has been on that levy in recent years?
Yes, sir.
Going back five years?
And to, let's see. Back in 1995, the tax rate for the city was 44 cents. And then right about 2007, 2008, as you all may recall, it was around 27 and a half cents. And the commission made a commitment when we had placed an additional half cent on the payroll tax, that we would reduce the property tax by two and a half cents, which you did in 2008. So, this will actually be the sixth year in a row that it's been 25 cents.
All right. Thank you, John. We will go right into motions, and I will ask Commissioner Abraham to...
I move that the rules for conducting city commission meetings be suspended insofar as they are conflicted with the print agenda for this meeting. Otherwise, the rules are to remain in full effect.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Ordinances and introductions. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Fixing the Levis and Rates of Taxation on All Property in the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Subject to Taxation for Municipal Purposes and for School Purposes for the Period from July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013, with the purposes of said taxes here underdefined. Purpose: General Fund of the City. Rate: Per $100. Real Property: 25 cents. Personal Property: 39 cents. Motor Vehicles and Watercraft: 39 cents. School Purposes: Paducah Junior College, Real Estate, .017. Personal Property: .017. Motor Vehicle: .031. The City of Paducah shall collect the following taxes for the Board of Education. Paducah Independent School Districts, Real Property: .747. Personal Property: .747. Inventory: .747. Total Tax Rate Per $100, Real Property: $1.014. Tax Rate Per $100, Personal Property: $1.154. Tax Rate, Total Tax Rate Per $100 Inventory: .047. Total Tax Rate Per $100 Motor Vehicle and Watercraft: .421. Property Tax Levied herein shall be due and payable in the following manner. In the case of tax bills which reflect an amount due of less than $500, the payment shall be due on November 1, 2012, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30, 2012. In the case of all other tax bills, payment shall be in accordance with the following provisions. The first half payment shall be due on November 1, 2012, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30, 2012. The second half payment shall be due on February 1, 2013, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until February 28, 2013."
Second.
Okay. Any questions on that? That is an introduction, so we will not ask for a vote. Thank you. All right. We will go on to minutes. Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the reading of the minutes for August 28, 2012, city commission meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meeting prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
We have a appointment, it's a little delinquent. Whereas, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners, I hereby reappoint Bernice Belt as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission. These terms will expire July 24, 2015.
I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the action of Mayor Paxton reappointing Dr. Bernice Belt as a member of the Paducah Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Bernice, we appreciate you serving on that commission. When I first appointed Bernice, I named her interim chairman, and then, according to the bylaws, I can name her permanent chairman, which I have. A letter needs to go out, and I believe my assistant, Teresa White, is working on that as we speak. So, you shall be receiving that, naming you as Chairman of Human Rights. We certainly appreciate your hard work. There's been a whole lot of non-vocal comments, which I think is good. So, when there's not a lot of complaining, then normally you must be doing your job well. So, I appreciate that. Keep up the good work. Are we, do we have a full number on the board? Please, come forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We have a minimum of nine that we're supposed to establish. That's a foundational number. We are at eight. In January, we were at four.
Yeah.
We are at eight now, and we have some prospects that I'll be bringing to you in the days ahead. So, our minimum is nine. We can have as many as we want. We can have them overflowing and hanging out the windows if you'll let us. There are so many good people in our city and our county. It's very difficult to narrow down, but we are trying to be very, very vigilant about that, because it's real important that people are placed on boards where they can serve the best. And we're becoming a transparent board, effective in January when you made me interim. And we would like to ask everyone to please take a look at our link on the City of Paducah website, and we've added a number of things, and we're building up. And if you're interested in serving, don't get mad at us if we don't vote you in. But we certainly want you to download the letter of interest and provide that information per our link on the website. Also, we are developed committees. We have our committee chairs and co-chairs, and those committees have been placed on the website, thanks to Pam Spencer, who just keeps everything up to date. We appreciate her. And so, we have educational initiatives that we're developing, and community outreach, even as we speak. And so, we're excited, and we're diligently trying to be the board, mayor, that you've always wanted, that our commissions, current and past, have always wanted. And that's not taking anything away from anybody. But if you don't strive to change, you'll stay the same. So, we are striving to change in the right direction.
The comments I made about having the perception that things are going pretty well right now, would you agree with that?
Yes, sir, I would. I would also like to share that we have had multiple complaints, and sometimes the complaints really don't fall under our jurisdiction, which you'll note within our mission statement. Many times, people need to know where to go. And so, we are also a resource to make resource referrals. Every, every human rights commission ought to be able to do that. And so, we have a list of referrals and categories in which they would fall under. And so, sometimes, we just have to be a sounding board and help people go to the, to the right source or resource, because they need to get their needs taken care of. And so, we have multiple purpose. We're a multiple-faceted board, and we understand that, and we're operating from that direction.
Any questions for Dr. Belt?
Just appreciate your leadership.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. We're going to make you proud.
Yeah. Well, just keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham?
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah order that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Ms. Cindy?
I don't really have anything to explain, Mayor. We've got some general movement, as you can see. I don't...
Right.
I think it's basically self-explanatory.
Any questions for Cindy on that? All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Gault? Oh, I'm sorry. We have to vote on that, don't we? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting a Resolution Entitled: Resolution of the Commissioners of Waterworks of the City of Paducah, Declaring Real Property on Washington Street, Surplus Property, and Requesting the Board of Commissioners of the City Authorize Sale of Said Property and Distribution of Proceeds Be Adopted."
Second.
Mr. City Manager, what exactly does that mean here? We're doing...
Means you're authorizing the water board to sell the building that they're currently conducting their office business operations from, and also to retain the proceeds.
Okay. Glenn, it's good to have you here. Are you just starting that process? You'll just start that process of trying to find the interest of people?
[inaudible]
Good. Good. Any questions for Glenn Anderson? Looking forward to your new building. I know you are, too. We're going to miss you downtown, but I think you're doing the right thing. Yeah. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving and Authorizing an Assumption Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority," be adopted.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting the McCracken County Area Solid Waste Management Plan for 2013 to 2017 Update," be adopted.
Second.
Okay. Comments?
Well, this is a statutory requirement of counties in Kentucky to develop these and to periodically revise them. I'm informed by McCracken County officials that the city is required to pass a order, agreeing with it or adopting with it. I did not send out a copy of that to all of you. I certainly would make it available if you care to see it. I was interested to look at it myself for the first time and really see what it covers. Not being in the landfill business, or the recycling business, per se, in the city, I haven't had the need to be too familiar with how the state governs solid waste management. But in reviewing this document, one thing that's sort of clear to me is that this document is essentially an inventory of what's going on city and county-wide in the various aspects of solid waste management, rather than a document that shows our compliance or progress with state-mandated targets in the various areas, which is common in many states. So, it's just basically an inventory of what's going on, and anything from solid waste collection to closing old dumps, to conducting voluntary recycling efforts throughout the county.
Any questions for the City Manager? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving the Sale of Real Property Located at 623 Husman Street, For and In Consideration of $50 to Julie Ann Rose," be adopted.
Second.
Okay. What do we have here?
This is basically transferring this property to Ms. Rose. What she does, is she grows the vegetables for the needy, and then distributes them. This lot will be used for that purpose. It's been off the tax roll since 1986, so we would like to see that go back on there. We did advertise it in the Paducah Sun and didn't get any other bids. We're recommending the surplus property and transferring it to her.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
How many properties do we have left when we started? We have several.
Yes. I don't know an exact count, but we've probably got in the neighborhood of probably 20 left.
And when you advertise in the paper, Josh, do you advertise all of them?
Just the ones that we get notices on, that people want to, to come up and buy. Those are the ones that have the sign that's placed on the property, and those are the ones that we advertise. Sometimes, we'll advertise more than one, just to try to generate interest, but sometimes that's successful, and sometimes it's not.
Why had somebody mentioned one? So, if they're interested in that, they call you?
They can. Nancy of Church is actually the one that'll put it in the paper.
Okay. And then you'll put it in the paper, and then they can bid on it, and anyone else that wants to.
Right. And there'll be a two-week period, whenever the sign's up, for anybody in the public to bid on the property as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if we're just trying to let people know that we have some surplus property, and if they're interested, please see, express it at City Hall.
They can. There's also a list on our website as well.
There is a list on the website. Good, good. So, please look at the website if you have any interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Ordinances and adoptions, we have talked about these, so I normally go through these quickly. So, Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Transfer of Ownership of the Real Properties Located at 427 North Sixth Street, 421 North Fifth Street, 625 North Sixth Street, 717 Harrison, 517 North Seventh Street, 511 through 517 North Fifth Street, and 533 Madison Street, all located within the City of Paducah, Kentucky, from Friends of Main Street, Inc., to the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the use and benefit of the Main Street Department of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah City approves and consents to the transfer of ownership of the real properties of Friends of Main Street, Inc., which properties are specifically defined within the ordinance to the City of Paducah for the use and benefit of the Main Street Department of the City, and acknowledges the request as outlined in the resolutions of the Board of Directors of Friends of Main Street, Inc., and Paducah Renaissance Alliance Advisory Board. This ordinance further authorizes the Mayor of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, for the benefit and use of the Main Street Department of the City of Paducah to accept and execute deed of conveyance of the properties."
Second.
Okay. Any questions on that? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
These are purchase of vehicles. Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of Two 2013 Dodge Charger Pursuit Vehicles for the City of Paducah's Police Department." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $56,452.40 to Freedom Dodge for the purchase of two 2013 Dodge Chargers for the City of Paducah's Police Department in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
Questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of Three 2013 Ford Police Interceptor Pursuit Vehicles for Use by the Paducah Police Department." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $86,664.01 to Crossroads Ford Lincoln, Inc., for the purchase of three 2013 Ford Police Interceptor Vehicles for the City of Paducah's Police Department in compliance with the Kentucky State Publishing Contract.
Second.
Questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of a 2013 Chevrolet Suburban for Use by the Paducah, City of Paducah's Parks Department." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $30,470 to Bob Hook Chevrolet Incorporated for the purchase of one 2013 Chevy Suburban for the City of Paducah's Parks Department in compliance with Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
Okay, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of a 2013 Ford F-150 Truck for Use by the City of Paducah's Fire Department, Fire Prevention Division." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $33,786.12 to Paul Miller Ford for the purchase of one 2013 Ford F-150 four-wheel-drive truck for the City of Paducah's Fire Department, Fire Prevention Division, in compliance with Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second. All right, any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Mr. Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of a 2013 Ford Escape for Use by the City of Paducah's Fire Department, Fire Prevention Division." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $22,028 to Wildcat Ford Lincoln for the purchase of one 2013 Ford Escape for the City of Paducah's Fire Department, Fire Prevention Division, in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
Questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Approving an Employee Payroll Tax Incentive for New Full-Time Employees as Part of an Economic Expansion Project by H.B. Fuller Company Under the Kentucky Business Investment Program, KRS-15432-010 to KRS-154-32-100." This ordinance is summarized as follows. The city hereby authorizes and approves the granting of a rebate to certain employees of H.B. Fuller of the city's license fee, as defined under Article IV of the Paducah Code of Ordinance, Sections 106 to 183 and 106 to 184, equal to 1% of the taxable wages of Fuller's 14 new Kentucky resident full-time employees working in Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, which satisfies the criteria under the provisions of the KBI for a term of not longer than 10 years from the activation date stipulated in the wage assessment agreement executed among the authority and H.B. Fuller or the receipt by Fuller of the total eligible KBI incentives and a local incentive in the amount of $250,000, whichever shall occur first, provided, however, H.B. Fuller remains in full compliance with the provisions of KBI and the MOU. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the MOU together with such other agreements, instruments, or certifications which may be necessary to accomplish the transaction.
Second.
Okay, this is exciting. 14 new jobs for Paducah, and we're participating with the state in order to help accomplish that. So it's a good win for Paducah. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Mayor Paxton?
Aye.
Ordinance introduction. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of 16 8-yard dumpsters along with additional dumpsters during the fiscal year 2012, 2013, to be utilized by the Solid Waste Division of Engineering and Public Works." This order to summarize as follows. That the Finance Director is authorized to pay Municipal Equipment Incorporated an amount not to exceed $70,000 for the purchase of 16 8-yard dumpsters along with various-sized additional dumpsters during fiscal year 2012, 2013, for the City of Paducah Engineering Public Works Department, Solid Waste Division, in compliance with Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
Okay, Rick, what do we got?
Mayor Commission, this is just a matter of, I guess, some paperwork for us to take care of the inventory we need to replace. We have like 800 dumpsters that are out there, and they need replacing every so often. So we'll continue to buy dumpsters and just replace those that need to be replaced, and that's what this is.
Do we, do people notify us that they need a new one?
Actually, our drivers, our drivers will let our superintendent know that, you know, the bottom's getting ready to come out of this, and this dumpster needs to be replaced. And/or when we have dumpsters that are upsized, for example, somebody might have a 4-yard dumpster, and they want to go to a 6. When we bring that 4-yard in, we'll evaluate it, and we'll recondition it, and if it's worthy of reconditioning, we'll recondition it and put it in our inventory, and/or if it's not, we'll sell it for scrap. So.
Any questions for Rick? All right, thank you. That goes, takes us to our city manager's report.
We'll have an executive session tonight dealing with land acquisition. Prior to that, with BBQ in the River coming up in just a couple of weeks, want to make mention that the City of Paducah would like to follow a longstanding request during BBQ in the River when, in the years where there are election years, that candidates for political office, please refrain from distributing written material within the permitted area. We will have a press release out on that tomorrow and information on our website about that and why that is necessary to do. I'm gonna ask Rick to share with you some good news on the flood wall rehab project that comes on the advent of a trip by Mayor Paxton, Mayor Protem Kayler, and Rick to Washington with the Chamber delegation. This will be amongst the topics that are discussed. And also, Rick, would you please make a brief comment on the issue and so the water quality permit for the Marina project that was issued last week?
Okay. Again, I appreciate this opportunity. Today at 3:22 this afternoon, I received an email from Teresa Beckham, who is the program manager or project manager for our flood wall reconstruction project. And she sent me some documents just announcing good news. In order for you to understand this, we've been working 14 years with the Corps of Engineers through the process of prequalifying federal dollars and then their participation in the flood wall itself. And actually, we received three letters today. One which comes from the Executive Office of the President, Office of Management and Budget. These were projects, they go through that office for their final, I guess, prequalification for federal dollars to be authorized and/or appropriated to a community. And it was addressed to, this letter from the Office of Management and Budget was addressed to Assistant Secretary of the Army Joelle N. Darcy. That basically said that our project meets all the qualifications, that federal participation is in order, and that also she later forwarded a letter to both John Boehner, Speaker of the House, of the Representatives of the U.S. Capitol, and also to Joseph Biden, who serves as our Vice President and the President of the Senate. These letters both went out, let's see, on September the 7th, which was last Friday. This is the end of a 14-year journey for that, but you're not to the finish line yet. I would say you're halfway. I don't know that you're halfway in time, but as far as qualifying the project to receive federal funding, you're there. Now, it's a matter of, I guess, how good of a salesman are we with our delegation, our federal delegation? And in these times of, I guess, national budgets, you'll be looking for, when we go tomorrow, Mayor, we'll be looking to get our authorization raised from 3 million to 19 and 1/2 million. That will be the first hurdle that we'll have to get cleared through Congress, and then it'll be a matter of appropriations. The authorization just says the project goes through Congress as at 19 and 1/2 million, and then when appropriations are made through appropriations bills, we can fund the project. So that's why I'm saying you're basically halfway, because even though we've got all of our prequalifications and we're clear to go, if there's never an appropriation or never an authorization change, nothing will get done. So that's something that we'll have to work hard on that. Segway, we have our second 401 water quality certification coming from the Division of Water that is on your riverfront project. That's good news in the sense that we have a Fonzie. One of the conditions of our Fonzie was that we could get a 401. You have your 401. Also, that you would have to get a 402, which is a stormwater discharge permit for the project that's also cleared through the Kentucky Division of Water, and then ultimately a 404 permit that comes from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Those we're working diligently on, and we should have those very, very soon. But one of the three legs of that hurdle are cleared, and we're looking that we will be working in spring, I'm real careful about saying this, in spring of 2013.
Wonderful. Great news. Great news. Yeah, thank you, Rick. Any questions for Rick on that, either one of those? All right, just get up there and put on your sales hat up in Washington, and I will, too.
Yeah, I've got a question. What's the deal with the red shirt up here?
Well, we're gonna hear that. I believe that's next on the agenda, the man in red here to the left. Commissioner Abraham, you want to comment on that?
Appreciate that, Rick. A couple of years ago, I found out that Commissioner Galt was a cheerleader in Mayfield. Mayfield football, Tillman football games coming up, so naturally, you know, I figured we need to make some friendly wager. Me, with all the confidence, that I would see her in a blue tornado football jersey. Hadn't quite worked out that way. So this is why I have the Mayfield shirt on, because this is the second year that I've had this on. So the last time this happened, I get home and my phone is blowing up, and these guys are like, "Man, what are you wearing in Mayfield?" So it's not my fault, okay? Our guys had taken care of business, you wouldn't be making this speech. But I don't want to be a welcher, so I'm a man of my words, so hopefully we'll get them next time.
Mr. Galt, do you got anything you want to add?
No, I mean, all I can say is, he did bellyache a little bit about it.
You texted me during the game wanting to know if I had the shirt still.
It's only because, I waited till close to the end of the fourth quarter. But, you know, he probably would have put a jersey on me, and I didn't ask Coach Morris for a jersey. I did just go ahead and buy something that he could hang in his closet year-round. So, but I remind him that he's the one that made the wager. He's the one that offered it up, so.
Well, if I were you, Commissioner Abraham, I would sit down with Coach White and have a real serious conversation with him.
Next year is the 100th anniversary of the very first game, so we'll get them next time.
Yeah.
It's at Tillman, too.
All right, good deal. All right, any other commissioner comments? Any public comments?
Well, I will just say it was a great day downtown today. I happened to be down there for a little bit, and the riverboat was in, and lots of tourists coming up and down Broadway, and ran into Dee Starnes and got some barbecue and potato salad to go, and a little art gallery on the corner was open. So it was just a great day downtown with lots of folks milling around. Good to see.
Weather was good?
Beautiful.
Shook hands with some of the people getting off the boat, and they were very complimentary of our town.
Great, great. Was a good day. All right, I believe Commissioner Galt has the next motion.
I do. I move that the board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS-618101B.
Second. All right, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler?